All right, good afternoon. I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. First item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Got a motion please, Council Arneson and the secondor, Councilor Kuntz, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Next item is the adoption of the minutes, the regular afternoon meeting of September 30th. Got a motion please, Council Ferguson, secondor, have a second, Council Whitmarsh, any errors or missions, all those in favor, opposed, carried. And motion to resolve the special close for the items on the agenda and on table. Got a motion please, Council Whitmarsh, secondor, have a secondor, Council Arneson, Councilor Richter, you have something to add?
I'd like to add a personnel please.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. We're now going to the closed. Thank you. All right, we will now reconvene the afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council, and our next item on the agenda is presentations, and D1 is a tree canopy assessment.
Your worship, Mr. Chu will start off and introduce our consultant, and then they'll take it from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to provide some quick background as to why we're here in front of mayor and council today. Very quickly, at the beginning of 2019, council identified tree canopy protection as one of the strategic priorities for the current council. And then subsequently, in April, council passed a notice of motion that addresses three elements. The first one is to adopt and implement a township-wide tree protection bylaw, and we were able to adopt a tree protection bylaw number 5478 in July. And the second element has to do with undertaking an existing tree canopy review and developing a canopy protection standard for the entire township, with some focus on the Brookswood-Furnridge area, and that's the topic of the presentation today. The third element has to do with appointing a tree protection committee, and we will be working on the terms of reference for the committee, and they will be presented to council early in 2020. So the presenter today is Trevor Cox. He is a principal of Diamond Head Consulting. His company has done many tree canopy assessments from B.C. to Ontario, more notably for the city of Surrey and city of Abbotsford. His company has also won an award from the Canadian Institute of Planners for its work in New Westminster, where they prepared an urban forest strategy. With that, I would like to ask Trevor to give his presentation.
Thank you. Welcome here.
Good evening.
And the mic picks up really, really well, so you don't need to move it up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to give you a brief, I guess, overview of the canopy assessment that we've been asked to conduct. Our firm, as Jason had mentioned, has prepared over 20 urban forest plans. We prepare numerous arborist reports throughout the Lower Mainland. We have biologists, foresters, planners, landscape architects on staff, so we're a multi-disciplinary team. So I think, I just wanted to give you a brief description of what an urban forest is, because the word urban implies something I think that a lot of people associate with cities, but really, we're talking about the municipality in general. So we're talking about all the vegetation, the soil, across the landscape. So I think the township provides a unique setting where it has all of these aspects, where you can find trees in all these different settings, from the agricultural lands, moving across into some denser neighborhoods, suburban areas, into kind of a denser urban center. So looking at these areas, I think it's also interesting to note how the municipality manages trees across these landscapes. It's the planning departments, park department, engineering departments, and it requires a lot of integration and communication between those departments to ensure that trees are managed throughout the city. We've been asked to do this canopy assessment. It's a standard approach for the industry, and really, it's taking an overview look down at a tree and measuring from the outskirts of the tree. There's some coarse measures to do it. We've been asked to do a more detailed look at it, and that's using LiDAR, and it's a spectral image of trees, so looking at different light coming from the image and trying to interpret what's a tree and what isn't. So I think this really leads to the need for urban forest. I think most people understand that trees provide benefits. We breathe air, and we, I think, the other benefits associated with it, whether it's wildlife habitat, in B.C., on the coast, we have the largest diversity of tree species in North America. These trees provide a sense of space. I think most people within the township would instantly say that trees create a sense of space within it. And we're starting to see research coming out that's showing the benefits of trees, so I'm sure a lot of you have heard of forest bathing and that connection to nature, and a lot of people are starting to see that their health is improving when they have connection or access to green spaces, let alone, I guess, the building and energy savings associated with trees. So there's lots of things that the trees are providing as benefits, and we're just starting to get ways to quantify those and really provide good cost-benefit analysis for them. Another very important aspect, and something that's kind of timely now, is really how trees provide a major role in climate adaptation. It's one of the key tools we can use to try and mitigate those changes. So tree canopy that's greater than 40% has a significant cooling effect, and you know, that's very important in areas you just think in hotter, warmer temperatures, but it does make a huge difference here in the Lower Mainland. Obviously, trees sequester carbon, and the rainwater is stored in the canopy of the trees before, so it really has a delayed effect before it goes into storm systems and other things. So a lot of research is going into how trees are actually benefiting and delaying that storm surge. So with this, there's a few other compounding issues. I think Langley is not unique in a lot of the municipalities across B.C. There's a decline in canopy cover. What this map is showing from a global source is looking at the township in relation to other municipalities in the area. So there's been large-scale canopy loss throughout the township, and it's the reason we're not seeing things in Vancouver as much, or some of these denser neighborhoods, is because the size of the parcels of lands that they're seeing large clearing occurring. So in these urban centers, you're seeing losses of 10, 15 trees. But really, it just highlights that a lot of municipalities are experiencing the same type of canopy losses as development and other pressures on the natural capital. So as I was discussing climate change here, I believe this is 71B in 208, I think. There, you can see there's a few dead, dying cedars within the stand, and really, cedars are not very tolerant of changes to their hydrology, and this is one species that's starting to see a change in its range due to the climate impact. So as I mentioned, we're looking at doing LiDAR, which is this light detection and ranging. So the image shows an aerial that's picking up the different light, so different colors, and we've used algorithms to determine what's a tree, what's a power line, what's a building. So this information is quite useful for other planning initiatives. It can be used to say how much permeable surface there is, where different areas of, or capitals located within your city. So we're looking at a tree canopy cover, and it's been refined, so it's, this is quite a detailed base framework that you can use to compare changes over time with. So what did we find in the township? Townshipwide, there's a canopy cover of 30.2%. And as you expect, there's a larger canopy cover in the rural areas because of the, really, areas that are more permeable, that can contain trees, and they're allowed to grow, and the urban's a little bit lower. The graphic to the right shows a measurement of canopy cover taken in 2014. Metro Vancouver did this, and it utilized a coarser method to measure. It's not as accurate, so you'll see a difference in the change in the canopy cover between Langley. It's actually a little bit lower through their method. But what it does show is where the township sits in relation to the other municipalities. And I think this requires more analysis, more, a little look at how each of these municipalities has different density zoning requirements. They have different tree canopy covers. They have different ages and species mixes. They've had different planting programs. So I think there's all different aspects that look at these, but it gives you an idea of where the township sits in relation to other municipalities. Breaking it down by community, the graphic on the right is showing the dark green areas have the highest canopy cover. The lighter it gets, the lower the canopy cover. But I think it's important to note, Brookswood-Furnridge is the larger canopy cover, getting down to Willbrook, down at 8%. So there's a variety of canopy covers throughout the city, and again, like different municipalities, there's reasons for these different neighborhoods having different canopy covers. So moving to more of the rural areas, this work is quite useful in helping guide kind of a regional network of green spaces, and it will help kind of create a green infrastructure network. So it's quite useful in the way to highlight where those large tracts of trees. There's a canopy height model that can be done to show the difference in height in trees, so kind of giving a volume of canopy. And these can be connected with your riparian areas and the different regional parks to create corridors. So often, this is called like a hub and networks between it for wildlife movement. So it's another way to kind of plan your natural capital, and so as development occurs, it allows your planners to really look at the landscape and foresee areas that could be possible acquisitions, or even to enhance certain areas. So looking at the next steps, we've really just done, what do you guys have? We're looking at the canopy cover right now. I think we're going to get into what does the township want. And with that, we'll be looking at staff interviews, doing a background review to see what policy and other plans you have in place, and to develop kind of a report card. So that's in relation to best management practices in the industry, and give you an idea of where you are now, and where you can go, and what resources it takes to get there. I think that's it. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much. So like all report cards, I guess we want to always do better.
Yeah.
There's a few questions here, but just a comment or a question. City of Burnaby, which I think is fairly dense, lots of towers, lots of, they had a higher percentage of tree canopy. They don't have as much agriculture land as a percentage that we do here. So is that because it's a more established community, that boulevard trees and parks are more established? I'm just wondering why, how they rate it?
I haven't done a plan there, but I would suspect they've got large forest tracts that are associated, very large parks, riparian strips, and other areas that I suspect are bringing up their canopy cover. So you would look at North Vancouver, very similar. When we did a plan in Campbell River, they have large forested areas, but the actual, once you took out the natural areas that were kind of on the edge of the, I guess, urban area, it was really down to 28%.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, North Vancouver, they've got the mountain. I mean, they're right up against the mountains there, so they have a lot of, which are natural areas that we can't replicate.
Yeah, and so I think that's why those numbers all have to be taken into consideration. I think, you know, city of Kelowna has an 18% canopy cover. City of New Westminster has an 18% canopy cover. One's a desert, one's a very dense urban area. And I think everything has its own context and its own canopy.
Good, thanks. Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you for coming today. Really interesting presentation. Couple of questions I had, just to help me, because I don't fully understand it. Is there a height of tree that it has to be before it is considered part of the canopy?
Yeah, I guess from our perspective, we would be looking at grass, shrub, tree, and classifying those. It really depends on what you're looking at. I think under forestry perspectives or bylaw perspective, Township of Langley used to define a tree as 1.3 meters in height and a certain stem. And so it really depends on bylaws or what you'd be looking at. But from a canopy perspective, we'll be defining it by the pixel size, and within each of it would be, this is tree or not tree. And so often, it's used with Google Earth and other ways to kind of verify whether it's a tree or not.
Right, okay. No, yeah, it's helpful. It's going on the track where I'm getting at here. The, so when I looked at the picture that you showed here of LiDAR, would a, so a small hedge or something like that would be picked up in LiDAR as part of tree canopy? Or does it have to be taller than the house to be?
It'll be, usually what we're looking at is, we're trying to narrow things out, so anything that's probably around three meters in height will be left, and then we will be picking that up and trying to define it as either hedge or shrub.
Okay, and a hedge or a shrub is not part of the current 31%, or so 30% canopy cover? That's not considered canopy?
No.
So there is a height of about three meters before a tree is considered part of the canopy?
Exactly.
Is that right? Okay, so I guess that leads me to another question around, like, we have, we have in the township, of course, as most communities do, a tree replacement policy around buildings. So when we have trees that are taken down in a property, and we build on that property, we have a tree replacement policy. Certain number of trees have to be planted. So when those trees are initially planted, because they're probably smaller, they wouldn't be picked up as part of the tree canopy, but I'm assuming that as they grow, five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road, they would then be picked up and now become part of that tree canopy? Is that, am I on the right pathway?
Yeah.
Okay, so in a newer community, which has had more recent developments, such as Willoughby, I see is at 29%. So there's been, obviously, over the last 10 or 15 years, lots of clearing to put up the various buildings. But over time, we would expect Willoughby to see an increase in canopy because of all the trees that have been planted, but are too small currently to be registered by LiDAR and other things. But in time, they will form and become part of the, that canopy, and increase the canopy. Is that, am I correct?
Yeah, I think you're on the right track. I think generally speaking, those trees also might be getting registered, but it's a very small percentage, and as they grow. So canopy from overhead gives a coarse estimate of your management, and it gives a good way for you to look into details. But obviously, you're going to be planting maybe trees that have large spread, that don't grow very tall versus a sequoia that is massive, that doesn't have as much spread. So there's, it's a coarse way to look at your environmental benefits, because often the benefits are accrued with a lot of, a certain size canopy, but it's not measuring the volume.
Right, okay. Interesting. Good. Well, that's good for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Arneson?
Yes, thank you very much for coming today. I had a couple of questions regarding what you're reporting back, and I think it's great that this is an initial assessment of your overall work. And so you're making more or less a snapshot in time, and then we're looking at what direction or recommendations we could consider in the township if we're wanting to improve our situation. So I appreciate that. You did have a slide, and it had some pictures of what I have observed, and I think others have, in terms of larger cedar trees, for example, in decline, just because of climatic changes. So is that something that you registers on the LiDAR as well? Can you adequately tell if a tree is healthy or not depending on the image that comes back?
Yeah, so we did come across a few areas where it was obvious there was decline, and some looking at, actually knowing some of the areas were either flooding, or there was obvious dieback from cedar. So I think it's something that, in the past five years, there has been a significant change in the, especially Surrey and the township, having conducted numerous arborist reports in these areas, that there's a lot of dying cedar. And so it's not only associated with development, it's just happening throughout kind of the streets. So in areas where the cedars are growing close to areas that, where they wouldn't have a full range for their roots, where they're constricted in some ways, often they're the first to decline.
As a follow-up question, you know, in your professional expertise, but I have noticed as well, as we've done a really good job about looking at development sites and trying to pre-select trees that we think could be able to be a specimen tree and remain there. And, but just the prospects of a tree like that, under these different conditions, being able to survive, is that something that you have to take into account in terms of your assessment?
Yeah, it definitely is. So I think that's where, you know, really, arborists should be considering the soil volume that's available, especially for cedar trees, and understanding that some of those potential conflicts with their roots might mean that the tree will not survive. And whether that means the tree is there temporarily, but the soil volume is left there for something to be planted in the future.
I don't really want to put you on the spot, but I will. I sit on a metro committee where we're looking at climate change. So from your capacity, do you see any prospects of having a regional canopy target, for example, that would go all across the region?
I'm not sure. Each municipality is unique in that way, and I don't think a regional canopy target would be as useful, I think, for certain municipalities. Like I was saying, New Westminster is so different than the Township of Langley in a lot of ways. And a lot of it has to do with practices that, you know, whether people have utilized tools like bylaws, whether they've had a history of planting, how development has occurred within each municipality. So like we were discussing District North Vancouver, and West Vancouver is so different than the municipalities across the bridge.
Okay, that's very fair, and that's a relevant point. My final question is, there's been a lot of discussion lately about the prospects of just planting as many trees as possible wherever you think that they could thrive. Do you have any kind of ideas about that, about where to put them, and if that's a reasonable strategy under the circumstances?
Yeah, I guess it would depend on where, and really, a plan would be more useful rather than just putting in as many as possible. Often, trees, you can take a tree farm, depending on how densely you plant the trees, and when you're going to look at, I guess, the management involved and the cost to implement those things, there's a lot of, nowadays, especially in urban areas, you're going to require a lot of watering and a lot of other maintenance. So trees will also compete with one another, so you have to have specific spacing depending on the species.
Great. Thank you very much.
Council Richter?
Yes, and I want to ask you a similar question to what Councilor Arneson asked you. Is there a target that's appropriate to a community like ours? Like, right now, we're sitting at 30%. Looks like that's fair. What should we be aiming for?
That's a good question. I think in the Pacific Northwest, there used to be a goal of 40% canopy cover, and that was a published guide. And I think the reason that they got rid of it was that they realized the differences amongst municipalities. And I think with it also an idea that any canopy cover is going to be a benefit, and that really, each municipality should be looking at it as a way to work backwards. It's really a matter of looking at, what is the density within each of your zoning types? What area can support a tree? In each of those lots, you can work backwards and say, we can only get 15% here. In your streets, it's a different situation, depending on what soil volume and how you develop that. You can only get a certain percentage in your street. And you look at your green spaces and other areas. I think the township is unique in that it's got a lot of these natural assets that are protected, or within different zoning types that mean that their forest cover is left there in perpetuity. So it would be something that has to be unique to the township.
Yeah, well, I think, and that's the issue that we're wrestling with, with the urban growth that we're experiencing and expecting to take additional population. But I'm worried about the health of the population, because we know from studies that have been done that trees are good for people. They're good for mental health, they're good for physical health. So 40%, that's an interesting target for us to maybe look at. And in terms of climate mitigation, are there any targets?
Not that there's, no. But I think for metro, there is a recent report that our firm prepared that had to do with how to plan your canopy and how to look at, I guess, standards to help those trees thrive, and provides a species list looking at that future climate. So really, it's about planning for that future and looking at what resiliency there is in those species.
Okay. And last question I have for you, to your knowledge, is there any community, anywhere in, say, North America, that could be seen as a role model in terms of canopy protection?
I think depending on the different tools that have been, so whether it's policy or bylaws or protection, I can think of lots of great examples. And I think that's something that those next steps in this plan will highlight in terms of those best management practices.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Long?
Thanks. I appreciate your PowerPoint. Hopefully, can we get a copy of that? Because there were some graphs and diagrams that I found quite helpful. And I didn't know quite how to approach this question, but I mean, is there a way of predicting? Or maybe you did cover it and I missed it. When, so trees come down and trees get replaced, as we've talked about, we have a replacement program. I guess you have to sort of calculate when those trees become actively part of the canopy. So can there be, there must be some comparisons that we could do to make sure we're on the right track?
Yeah, and I think we do a lot of forecasting and a lot of our plans to show how a planting program will grow out your canopy over time, and what the existing street tree plantings are. So then, if you have information on your existing canopy, we can just project it over time and put in the expected mortality rates for different species. it over time and put in the expected mortality rates for different species, and, and it really gives a pretty good idea of how many trees you might want to plant to reach a canopy goal.
And by specifying the species, you can actually improve the potential success or viability of a canopy in the future, right?
Yeah, so we would typically look at what your mortality rates are, working with the Parks Department to find out how species are doing, how old they are in certain environments, and get an idea to fine tune things like that.
And I guess what else, what other, what trees are actually suited to our environment, and that changes over time, too. I know that we've planted lots of trees over the years that didn't work.
Yeah.
And maybe that's also a moving target because of the climate change and so forth.
Yeah, and I think a lot of it is looking at what those risks are. So are there species that you're expecting to be declining? And obviously, we know about Western Red Cedar is one, but there's lots of other street trees that are planted that are also going to be declining with those expect, expected changes in climate.
Do you have any affiliation, or not affiliation, but experience with Tree Canada? I can recall many years ago, the township being involved with a tree planting project, where the trees were supplied, grants were supplied, and communities were involved. I don't know if we've seen any of that recently, but is that something that you could help us with?
Yeah, there's lots of opportunities. I think Tree Canada is a great source for plans and for other funding for things like that. But there's lots of other organizations that provide monies for, really for ecological restoration and other things like that.
And it gets the community involved, too, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you very much for coming, and I appreciate if you get those copies to us as well, your presentation. You know, it's interesting, you look at this picture right here, you know, that's actually a farm where probably a hundred, a couple hundred years ago, there's probably a lot of trees there at one time. That's with farming. So if you look at Langley Broad, we're a community of communities. If you had the agricultural component versus the non-agricultural components, I wonder what we would be compared to the, the other communities. I'm talking about Langley City that has almost the same number as we have, and with no regional parks. I was walking, my wife and I and the dogs are walking through Campbell Valley Park the other day, and, you know, certainly, we love the trees, we love walking through there and things like that. And we have at least, I think, five regional parks, plus our own park, or a community of parks as well. What, my question to you, where does green space become involved with canopy, canopy study, or is that separate, distinct?
Well, I, I think this was the beginning of analysis, and I think the idea was to kind of get you this information, but you can dial into it further. And I think your question kind of raises that. It's, obviously, you can look at the percent cover of grass and shrub. Those are also providing environmental benefits. And I think that's where some of this would be highlighted in the township, because there's a lot of natural area there. It's just, right now, some of it's not canopy cover. So I think that would highlight potentially some of those other benefits that's seen. And I think that's your question, you know, is people walk through green spaces, it might not be forest cover. It might be a, you know, something like this. And, and there's still benefits to that, and we're just looking at one component of it in what's considered a green space.
Anyway, thank you very much for coming today.
You're welcome.
Thank you. There's no further questions from counsel. So thank you very much for that presentation. It's very informative. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to D2, and social sustainability strategy. Three S's. Mr. Ward is here to present.
Your worship, while Mr. Ward is getting ready, I can just advise counsel that the presentation is in support of item F1, and counsel may wish to consider that, that report after the presentation, your worship.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you, your worship. And this update is in keeping with the terms of reference that council approved for this project. And it was also something that council had requested at the March Council Priorities Committee meeting, so just some background on why I'm here today. So the presentation is in three parts, and it's essentially the three main components of the Emerging Directions Report, which are included in item F1 there. It'll be a summary of the work to date, an overview of the emerging directions for the strategy, and then an outline of the next steps. So, in late 2017, council approved terms of reference to guide the preparation of a social sustainability strategy to help lay groundwork for action on social issues. The process to prepare the strategy is organized into four phases, with implementation identified as the fifth phase. And as you can see on the slide there, the project is currently near the beginning of Phase Four, which is anticipated to conclude in early 2020 with council's consideration of a draft strategy. In broad terms, the work on the strategy thus far has involved best practice research, background research, community engagement, and inter-divisional staff team and task force meetings. The Emerging Directions Report provides a more detailed summary of this work, but the point I'd like to emphasize here is that this work has been extensive and has facilitated the preparation of evidence-based emerging directions. Phase Four thus far has involved preparing those emerging directions, which I'll turn to shortly. And these emerging directions were based on all of that work in the previous phases, and were presented in a draft form to the Social Sustainability Task Force on September 16th. Generally, these emerging directions were well received by the task force, and the Emerging Directions Report integrates the majority of the task force's feedback. That said, the task force did engage in a robust discussion about opportunities to better articulate issues related to health as part of the strategy as it moves forward. As you'll see shortly, health is not articulated as a specific emerging priority, even though those six emerging priorities that I will be presenting shortly address what we would call social and environmental determinants of health. As noted in the council report, staff will continue to work with the task force to explore ways to better articulate and integrate health as part of the strategy moving forward. Apologies. So as just noted, much of the community engagement and research undertaken so far has focused on identifying strengths, challenges, opportunities, and threats related to our social well-being in the township of Langley. And on this slide, we've attempted to synthesize hundreds of pages of research findings into six key issues and trends. The first being climate change, not just simply an environmental issue, as climate change is expected to hinder economic growth, potentially erode global food security, and threaten human health and safety. The second regarding income inequality and high living costs. One in 10 township residents is currently living in poverty. And while household incomes in Langley are higher than the regional average, township households face substantially higher costs of living, including some of the highest housing and transportation combined costs relative to income in the region. With regards to new health challenges, obesity and non-communicable diseases, diseases, sorry, which are symptoms of unhealthy lifestyles and our environment, are really going to be the health burden of this century. Obesity rates in the township of Langley are higher than the regional average, even though township residents actually have relatively healthier lifestyles. They engage in more exercise and eat healthier. With regards to population growth and changing demographics, the township of Langley is one of the fastest-growing municipalities in the Lower Mainland and is facing various demographic shifts, not only in relation to the aging profile of the population and increasing cultural diversity, but also in terms of the urbanization of areas that were previously rural. These changes can bring new opportunities like further cultural exchange and intergenerational exchange, but these changes also place pressure on community services and infrastructure, and may challenge community connectedness and our social cohesion. With respect to reconciliation, in 2015, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission released its final report, along with 94 calls to action, to redress the legacy of residential schools and advance the process of reconciliation across the country. And the commission defined reconciliation as an ongoing process of establishing and maintaining respectful relationships between indigenous and non-indigenous peoples, so that future generations can live together in dignity, peace, and prosperity on the lands that we now share. And finally, technological innovation. Rapid technological advancement will increase the pace of change, creating new opportunities and also new challenges. Of course, as a local government, we are not solely responsible for addressing all of these issues and trends. Listed on this slide is just a sample of roles the township can play in addressing social issues. And of course, not all of these roles would be appropriate in the full social realm. It depends on the issue. Ultimately, a number of parties, both governmental and non-governmental, have a role to play in improving our social well-being. And this has been something that staff have consistently been communicating throughout our engagement processes. So turning now to the emerging directions, and as I said, this is based on all of the work to date, and this is the, the bulk of the emerging directions report that's provided in item F1. The purpose of this graph here is just to, as a high-level summary, identify the different components of the emerging directions with a high-level vision, three 10-year goals, six five-year priorities with associated actions that make progress towards all three of the goals. More specifically, the emerging vision statement is as follows. The township of Langley is a connected, inclusive, and resilient community where everyone can enjoy and contribute to a great quality of life. The cornerstone of this vision is three words, connected, inclusive, and resilient, that form the basis of the strategy's three emerging goals. The emerging 10 years' goals, which correspond with the life of the strategy, would be a connected community, an inclusive community, and a resilient community. Collectively, making progress towards these goals would improve community health, increase neighborhood safety, and feelings of safety, and ensure that we are able to sustain a great quality of life, among other things. Looking now at the five-year priorities. To achieve the 10 goals, six five-year priorities have been identified, and these are not in any order of priority or significance. Relationship building here is with regard specifically to the relationship between indigenous and non-indigenous peoples. Within each priority, priority area, there will be recommended actions that address current and anticipated challenges that the township could undertake in collaboration with its community partners. Recognizing the need for more work on actions, the Emerging Directions Report provides sample actions for illustrative purposes. In identifying these six priorities, we employed a number of tests that were used as, that were based on the guiding principles and assumptions for the project. These tests included, is there an opportunity for the township to strengthen its engagement in the area? Will addressing this priority make progress to more than one issue or trend? And does this priority address the root cause of the issue? And to be clear, in identifying these priorities does not suggest that as a community, we are completely flawed in these areas. In fact, the Emerging Directions Report identifies a number of existing strengths that we can build on, strengths that we can leverage and continue to build on moving forward. And finally, as five-year priorities, we are suggesting that these be reviewed at the midterm point of the 10-year strategy. Now turning to the priorities in a little bit more detail. Priority one around relationship building has been articulated as follow. Commit to the ongoing work of building and sustaining meaningful relationships between indigenous and non-indigenous peoples. Building and sustaining these meaningful relationships will lead to a more connected, inclusive community, and will build enhanced resilience as we face common threats like, like climate change. And I do note that we have proposed the term relationship building here rather than reconciliation, to acknowledge that the term reconciliation does not resonate with all local First Nations. Some sample actions in this area that are included in the Emerging Directions Report could include improving staff competencies and working with local First Nations, and then broadening collaboration with local First Nations and indigenous organizations to better explore opportunities to raise community-wide awareness and understanding of indigenous histories, cultures, and issues. Second priority has been articulated as enhanced social connectedness and community engagement. Social connectedness helps us build a healthier and safer community and enhances resilience in the face of sudden shocks and changes. Sample actions in this area could include innovate and seek new ways to support community connections and volunteer opportunities that help to bridge potential age, cultural, and community divides, or explore partnership opportunities to provide small grants for neighborhood-based projects that aim to connect and engage neighbors. The third emerging priority is housing. Promote a range of affordable and suitable housing choices. As a basic human need, housing that is affordable and suited to everyone promotes a healthier and more inclusive community. Recognizing the planned work in this area to prepare a housing needs report this year and next, under this priority, an action could be to consider an update to the housing action plan following the completion of the housing needs report. Priority four is around food. Encourage an equitable and more self-reliant local food system, which essentially means ensuring that community members have enough to eat and that we can grow more food locally. Not only is food a basic human need, it is also a way for us to connect with each other, and increasing local food self-reliance will foster community resilience in the face of threats to the global food system. Actions in this area could include research ways to expand community gardens, including ways to identify more local support for retrofits in existing community parks, or explore opportunities to, to support better access to local food, including support as appropriate for farmers' markets in different communities throughout the township, and the promotion of farms that do farm gate sales. Priority five is around learning. Advance opportunities for lifelong learning and social innovation. Pursuing learning opportunities can help reduce loneliness, improve health, and nurture relationships with communities of shared interest, and builds resilience in the face of a changing and complex world. Actions in this area could include expand digital literacy, to ensure that residents and organizations can access online programs and services and can participate in the digital age, and support initiatives that build the capacity of all sectors to work more closely and collaboratively together. Last, but certainly not least, is getting around. Provide accessible, healthy, and safe transfer choices, transportation choices. Getting around is integral to our social well-being, and getting around by private automobile is just simply not possible for many people due to different ages, income levels, and abilities. So for people that rely on walking, including movement with wheelchairs and other mobility aids, cycling, and transit, these modes can promote social interaction while walking and cycling are healthier. Actions in this area could be to convene residents, local businesses, and translink to share information and identify opportunities to improve transit service, and/or prepare a walking strategy to further explore opportunities to enhance walking in our community, considering items such as comfort, connectivity, and identifying priority areas for capital improvements. So subject to council's direction, the next steps for the strategy would involve additional work, including refining and further developing the recommended actions, and identifying potential partners, developing the implementation principles, considering the potential financial implications and resource implications, and identifying indicators to monitor over the life of the strategy. This work will include additional meetings with the project task force, as well as opportunities for broader community engagement, and will conclude with council's consideration of a draft strategy in early 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got a couple of questions. Counselor Richter?
Yes, very comprehensive document here. I got a little nervous with the use of the word funder, because everybody wants money from us, and that pot's not unlimited. So I'm not sure it's our job to fund a lot of these initiatives. I think it's our job to facilitate a lot of these initiatives, but I don't think funding them is, is going to be realistic from the property tax dollar. But I did have a question. I know in the next stage, you're going to be looking at financial implications. Do you have any idea right now, ballpark, of what this strategy is going to cost us going forward?
So maybe just on the point of the funder, those were just samples of a continuum of roles that the township could play. And I'm sorry if it made it appear that we would be funding all of these initiatives and perhaps delivering transit service or something to that effect. That's simply not the case. It's just an example of one way. So funder, as an example of something that we're already doing, for instance, is through our community grants, grants program. It's just an example. Certainly not suggesting that we would be getting to fund all of these items in this report. Certainly not.
That's good, because in the, in the supporting documentation, it looked like some of the participants in the workshop thought maybe we should be funding them. Yeah.
That's a great point. When we did the community engagement exercises, we didn't want to constrain the discussion insofar as saying, well, that's not within our mandate, that's not within our mandate. Because if someone had identified something such as improved transit service, hate to pick on this, but it did come up, we recognize that we wouldn't be the funder or the service deliver, but there are things that we could do around that. We can convene the stakeholders, for example. We can continue to plan our new neighborhoods in a transit-friendly way. And again, that was something that we always came back to at the end of each program, was that we have a continuum of roles. When it comes down to deciding which actions we undertake, we will be very considerate of what our mandate and resources are.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ward, for coming today. I just wanted to, a housekeeping question first, Patrick. How long have you been the social planner for TOL?
I believe I had my two-year anniversary in September.
Two-year?
Yes.
Okay. So I know you've been pretty busy. This is pretty fast you've got these things together. I know that certainly is a social sustainability issues. I think these are the issues that have been difficult, and will be things occurring over the next decade that, all the things you've mentioned here in your report, anywhere from, and I like the fact we're a welcoming community, connecting community, a resilient community, working forward with those. And I think that this, you could have many other measures, technology, environmental, there's all sorts of other things we can have there. There are all sorts of. Have you had a chance, when you're putting this, this report together, just kind of touching base with other communities and see what they're doing as well, if I may?
Yes, yeah. So as part of our best practice review, we looked at, at least a dozen different comprehensive social plans from other municipalities right across the continent, and a lot of the directions that we're taking are consistent. That said, we're proposing a slightly different approach where we're, our That said, we're proposing a slightly different approach, where we're articulating six specific priorities, whereas some of our neighbours throughout the region have taken a more broad approach in sort of trying to address all of the various topics that you would consider to be related to social sustainability. But we feel that this will be a much more implementable approach in trying to identify priorities that are touching on multiple issues, rather than, we, we just simply don't have the capacity that some of our neighbours have in the social planning portfolio.
And I do, I do appreciate, I appreciate the way you've broken it down here, and I think it's, it's certainly something, it's important, especially Langley being a welcoming community. And also I like here, because I'm on the Indigenous Committee for Metro, I like the fact your reconciliation, you're also involving that in. So, you know, I wish you well. Now, you've got a kind of a short window here, you, we're looking for, to see something by spring of 2020, if I may? Have you got enough time for that?
We will do our best.
Okay. Thank you very much indeed.
Councillor Kuntst?
Yes, thank you so much. I was really excited to read all the work that you guys are doing. So I had a question about building relationships, and as you know, I, I quite work closely with our refugee and immigrant community. So how are we building relationships with that particular population? I think there's 20% of our, our population here in Langley is newcomers and refugees, so I just wanted to highlight that, that area.
Yes, thank you. I think there's a lot of opportunity under the theme of connectedness and community engagement, or belonging, to really explore that very important need to ensure that newcomers are included into our community. We've chosen, at least at this point, as an emerging priority, to recognize the relationship building between indigenous and non-indigenous peoples as sort of a standalone priority, given its importance within the national scale.
Thank you. Councillor Ward?
Yeah, thanks for that. This was a process started by the previous council, just to keep me a bit up to speed on this. So yeah, and I think I recall some of the rationale for that, but one of the things I really heard, you know, not from everyone, but during the last campaign, was that the role of municipality, don't you ever forget, Mr. Woodward, is to pick up my garbage and pave my, you know, fill my pothole and prepare my street. And when I went, when I went through that document, you know, I saw, you know, food, poverty, transit. And what, what extent would you consider this to be sort of moving beyond the municipality's mandate into the mandate more typically associated with the province?
It's a great question, and it comes up frequently in social planning circles, what is the role of the municipality in these items? And there's, to be honest, no specific answer. You'll see other municipalities engage in some issues more than others. I'd just point out that the community charter states that one of the purposes of a municipality is to foster social wellbeing.
Oh, you were ready for that question? Wow, that's, wow, I like that. I respect that a lot. So one example I came up with for food, though, while sitting here, was, you know, we could talk about food security, and we could have a strategy, we could do lots of planning around something like that, which maybe isn't typically associated with the municipality. And then the federal government will legalize cannabis, we might lose every single greenhouse in the township to a non-food producing item. And so that's something like that, that, you know, I think we could do a lot of thinking and a lot of talking about an item like that, is one example, that in the end, we don't have the authority to, to really deal with anything about it. I don't know, would you, would you ready for that question as well?
No, not specifically. It's a point well taken. I, I do think that you're, you're correct, is that the, with any element of social wellbeing, there's all sorts of external influences that happen. I think the best that we can do is plan, you know, based on the information that we have and what we do see forthcoming. And we have done a lot of work in trying to analyse what those big mega trends coming forward will be.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
I think there was a setup that was pretty good. I didn't, I don't have, I didn't talk to you earlier about a question, but, but I guess the sustainability lens is a good thing for us to make all kinds of decisions throughout. It's an exhausting document, and I must say, I had a breeze through, I don't know if I have to meet the whole thing between Thursday and now, so it'll be on my bedside for reading, because it's quite interesting, very interesting, and well done on it. So Attachment C is a meeting summary notes from meeting number six. Can we get meeting notes from one, two, three, and four, and five? Just if that's possible, just so we can keep an eye on what's going on, and make sure you're getting the input that you need from the community and all the help we can give you to.
Yeah, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Yes, thank you very much for coming. And I know that this has been very extensive and comprehensive, and you're not done yet. So I just wanted to refer to a couple of the findings, I guess, that form the basis of this. And I know Councillor Woodward has referenced something that I've struggled with myself in terms of just community dialogue and people's opinions about what our exact role is with local government, and, you know, the services that we can or cannot provide on the social end of things. But, so one in particular stood out to me, the statistics that one in 10 people in the township of Langley live in poverty. So is that, is that kind of statistic something that is related to an age or a demographic, or is that just sort of an average percentage of the findings?
That was the percentage for the entire population. We do through, you know, the census package, have access to what those poverty rates are for, for specific age demographics, and they were reported in our social profile. I can look them up really quickly if you like, or we can?
No, it's okay. I just, you know, my own personal assessment, despite the challenges of finding the resources to address these issues, is that when we have social malaise in our community, it results in a cost to us that we have to bear in any event. So there are opportunities, I think, for us to consider partnering, to advocate, and do those kinds of things, you know, rather than waiting for something, I'll just use homelessness as an example, obviously, to provide more affordable housing units to the degree that we are able to, means that we have less people that we have to look after and address on a crisis basis as homeless individuals. The other question I had was, so it seems to reference quite a bit the idea of inclusion, and people connected to each other in our community, and you reference neighbourhood grants. So is that something that you consider might be sort of an expanded topic going forward about how people might look at that, and what is a good model to consider for our community?
Yeah, that, that specific action is an outcome of some early research that we've done, and staff have identified a potential fund matching opportunity with the Vancouver Foundation, where they will cost-share very small grants for neighbourhood-based projects, $500 grants, just so neighbourhood groups can get together and throw a neighbourhood block party, or establish a little library, all sorts of, you know, ideas at the neighbourhood local level. So again, these actions are, are samples just for illustrative purposes, to provide a little bit more context to the report, but it's certainly something we will be at the staff level exploring as we move forward with this.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, and certainly, listening to council, it's, you know, we are always aware of, of funding certain items that sure don't lay in our realm. However, I understand that we have a big role to play in how we plan our communities, make them healthy, make them walkable, and put that lens, social sustainability lens on what we do normally. And so I think that's really where this is going, advocating for, you know, certain amenities that do help our community become healthier and more socially sustainable. So it's great that you're here, putting that lens on, and I look forward to further work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have a delegation, so I'm going to go to the delegation first, and then this is the next.
Say on that, Mr. Anderson, on my?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Yeah, I'll put your mic on, just hold on. There you are.
Yeah, just if we're going to not, we're going to postpone F1 for now, and we're going to proceed to E1. Just let you know that subject to legal advice, which is on its way, I'll be declaring a conflict of interest on this item in the interim. Thanks.
Thank you. So next item delegations, we have Mr. Ed Warzel and Andy Shildhorne here, and welcome here. You've delegated before, so you know it's a five-minute time limit.
Yes, thank you.
Ask yourself, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Ed Warzel, and I live at 9068 Nash Street in Langley. I'm here today as I've recently joined my local community association, and now I'm part of the North Langley Truck Rerouting Committee. I've had many discussions with Langley residents related to their concerns regarding truck traffic in the Fort Langley area, which has motivated me to take the steps to address this issue with you today. As council enters into this final quarter of the year to discuss budgetary ideas for 2020, I feel it's important to draw your attention to several key perspectives on this issue. Concerns with truck routes in North Langley were first raised in 2011. Over the past several years, there have been many council reports, public information style meetings, communications with translink, communications with the Ministry of Transportation, and technical engineering reviews, environmental reviews, and noise impact assessments, to name just a few. In 2016, council approved this project, and since that time, this issue has remained as an unfunded township, township project. Our committee is currently in the process of coordinating support of local residences, businesses, and associations in favour for the immediate funding of this issue. Our early assessment of the barometer of support for this project indicates that there is vast backing for this in the community. In 2019, both the Fort Langley Community Association and the Fort Langley BIA indicated through their surveys, they were able to determine that truck rerouting remains the community's number-one concern. Our preliminary discussion with independent truck drivers indicates that an alternative truck route in North Langley would very much be welcome. The current route through Fort Langley is difficult to navigate and somewhat nerve-wracking for drivers due to the heavy volume of pedestrian traffic in the area. As far as benefits, the North Langley area and specifically Fort Langley is truly a gem, which is the envy of many municipalities in the lower mainland who are trying to replicate our community and the vibe that exists there in that area. Langley Township is quickly becoming a major tourist hub for visitors to the greater Vancouver area. Recent additions of farm and food markets, musical festivals, art shows, and concerts are quickly cementing the reputation of this community as a family, as a family-friendly heritage area offering services, entertainment, and economic opportunities. There are economic benefits to township in addressing the North Langley Truck Rerouting Project. These benefits will result in increased tourism and exposure to the rest of the township, and by default, attraction of additional commerce to all of Langley, as well as facilitating funding for amenities in all our communities. Rerouting the North Langley, rerouting the trucks in the North Langley area will not only improve resident and visitor safety, but also reduce congestion on our roads by providing a more efficient route for truck drivers. Improved truck routes will improve the efficiency of moving our goods and services, which in essence will increase the overall livability for everyone in Langley. So to wrap up, every taxpayer is acutely aware of the financial impacts of decisions for funding projects. The funding for this project is, is very much overdue and relatively minor when balanced against addressing safety and congestion concerns. With all the budget items being forward to council this year, please keep in mind the identified priorities of our residents, business owners, and the trucking industry. This program has significant community support and now requires community representatives to provide the funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So council asked staff for an update, because you referenced, you know, this goes back a few years, and, and, you know, it doesn't go as quickly as we'd all like, but I, on our distribution list, the staff provided a report to council, and I've asked, or led services to provide copies, so I have copies here for you. And see, it's, you're right, there's lots of reports. But I'll just, if you can take those, just want to point out that just recently, a consultant has been obtained to go through assessments of the truck route, and according to the report here, we expect to have the report back from staff in February of 2020. So it is near and dear to a lot of, I think, members of council's heart, it's been here for a while, and we're working towards it. So hopefully this will help give us some background, and we appreciate you coming out. I don't have any, any questions, but I do appreciate it, and hopefully the report helps, and we'll continue to work to get this, this done. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Here's the next one if you want. Thank you. Okay. So last, Mr. Ward, or sorry, Councillor Woodward to come back. Oh, it's been done. Next item on the agenda, reports to council, F1 is social sustainability strategy, and there's a receipt and a direction there. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Davis, seconded by Councillor Ferguson, discussion on F1, seeing none, I'm going to call a question. Presentation was so good. Carries unanimously. Thank you. F2, age and dementia, age and dementia-friendly action plan, terms of reference. It's been, it's been moved, and seconded, moved by Councillor Richter, seconded by Councillor Ferguson, discussion on F2. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm happy to see the fact that we're going to move forward with, with doing this plan, and that we're going to try to get a grant of $25,000 from UBCM to do so. At the end of the first term of the seniors advisory group, having a dementia-friendly community was an initiative that the, the seniors advisory group came up with, and I'm very, very happy that we're proceeding to try to get this done now.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd specifically like to focus on Patrick Ward and all his efforts to help us. I know he's probably a little embarrassed I've said that, but I think the seniors advisory committee, as Councillor Richter has referenced, this has been a longer-term goal. But in order to initiate a plan, you need to have some good discussion and a lot of, you know, meaningful dialogue about this, and Patrick was very good about bringing forward all the information, and we had great speakers that came to speak to us about this. I think personally, it'll make a, a great overlay and a combination to be integrated with our age-friendly plan, and so I, I think that based on the demographic and the need, I think it's really a very positive thing to move forward with, so fingers crossed we get the funding that we need for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson?
Also want to thank Councillor Ward, not Councillor Ward, Mr. Ward, and also Councillor Anderson for the work they've done as well, to keep the committee going and keep the energy moving. I think it's been an active committee, and I think the compliments should be around. Thank you.
Great, thank you. See no further discussion, I'll call a question on F2. It carries unanimously. Move on to F3, is community amenity contributions exemption. There's a motion there, it's to consider, we need direction, if anybody wants to move, move that we provide, because the word "consider" is that we changed to that we provide an exemption.
Yeah, we've moved that we provide.
Yeah, thank you, Sir Secretary. Councillor Kuntst, discussion, Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I'm opposed to this. This particular complex is going to create more pressure on community resources. We're going to need more firefighters, more police officers, more roads, more parks and facilities. And this, this application has been hanging around really since 2012, and I just have a question through you to staff, how much did their land value go up since 2012?
Back.
Do we have any idea?
Your Worship, we wouldn't, we'd be speculating at this time, so.
Thank you.
Also, Your Worship, just a, a point of clarification. I understand perhaps a proponent has, has indicated the application has been in since 2012, however, I've been advised that the application was deemed to be not complete in 2012, so it was not considered an application that could be processed, and in fact, the full complete application was submitted in 2016.
Yeah, same thing. It's 2019 now. Why, what, if they wanted to avoid these community amenity contributions, why didn't they proceed faster with their application? I just don't think we should be making exceptions to this.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
I just want to get this straight here, because certainly people want to proceed when the market is the highest, and now it's probably less than it was a couple of years ago, I think everyone knows that. But there were a number of reasons for a delay, apparently, but I mean, this does or does not be consistent with the policy that we have. This was an in-stream application before a certain date, so it's eligible for an exemption, and I just want to make sure that that's correct.
That's correct. Council has to make the decision, though, as to whether or not the exemption will be granted.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, see no further discussion, I'm going to call the question on the motion. And the motion fails. Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Richter, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Anderson, Counsel Davis opposed. Okay, we want to F4, community amenity contributions policy, and this is a motion to receive. Kind of a motion, please. Counsel Richter, seconded by Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion, seen none, I'll call the question.
To receipt, right?
To receipt, yeah.
Yeah.
And the motion carries unanimously. We want the minutes of committees. There's seniors advisory committee and council priorities committee. Could I have motion to receive those? Counsel Kunst, seconded by Counsel Davis in the discussion, seen none, call the question on H1. Carries unanimously. Move to H2. Moved by Counsel Richter, seconder. Have a seconder?
I had a question about H1.
Well, we've already gone through H1, so.
Yeah, I pushed it back.
Yeah, you pushed it back now after the vote. So I'll quickly go back to H1, if you just hold off. I haven't taken a second yet. So H1.
I was just commenting, looking at the minutes. Wait a minute, is this the right one? Counsel, seniors advisory is the one I'm looking at.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and it says that there was a nice presentation, and the, you know, blah, 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 but it was noted in the presentation that local governments could consider advocating to the province to provide funding for hospice. So if the township hasn't done that, we should do that.
Yeah, I know hospice does, apparently, they have the funding, the capital funding's in place from Ministry of Housing and Fraser Health, but certainly, we can touch base with them and see if they require assistance.
Well, maybe I could ask staff to look into that, and if we haven't, by gosh, we should be. We talked earlier about sustainability and all these different things that we're involved in. We should be advocating for the province to step up where it belongs, and this is another example.
Okay, we'll look into that. Thank you. Okay, so moved by Counsel Richter, H2. Is there a seconder to H2? Counsel Kunst?
Oh, yeah.
And so, discussion on H2, seen none, I'll call the question. Carries unanimously. H3, Counsel Richter moves it, seconder. Counsel Long, discussion, seen none, call the question, H3.
We're gonna get out early tonight, then finish by six.
One way or the other, we have a hard stop at six. That carries unanimously. And so now we move on to other business, and we have.
I'm asking about it.
Oh.
I guess I'm doing this all wrong, aren't I?
Yeah, you are. So you.
You'd think I'd know by now.
You'd think so.
Quick question, then, if you don't mind, Your Worship. So when will these items, now that they've been passed, potentially come into effect?
They have to come back as a bylaw.
Oh, we have to get bylaws first.
This is his direction.
Thank you, yeah, yep.
Thanks. Okay, Counsel Richter. Counsel Richter, you're on.
Motion?
Is there a seconder?
No second.
Counsel Kunst, sec-, oh, sorry. Oh, okay. Counsel Woodward's seconding I1, discussion. Counsel Richter, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, I just think that what we need to be focusing on here is respecting the charter rights of everybody, and that this motion is not about any one particular group, but about all groups, and I really think that the township shouldn't be dictating what causes are supported or not supported, that that's really an individual choice, and that it's really important, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you've worked very hard to ensure that the chamber space is a neutral space, where everyone is feeling welcomed and able to express their own opinions, so.
Thank you. I see no discussion, and I'll just say that I'll oppose this, and I understand the intent. However, this is dealing with our individual human rights as members. I don't think township has ever directed people on a dress code, and I don't think they can. So it's individual, and if nine individuals want to wear the same poppy, or the same badge, or the same shirt, that's so be it, but no one is really asking them or demanding it, so I can't support this. Thanks. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to, somebody did raise the example of a poppy to me in regards to this motion, and so, you know, I took that to heart, but I think with this particular process, it was probably the first time, maybe, that the township had committed as to wearing the T-shirt on Facebook. I think that's where some of this started. So I think I sort of support the notion that, you know, maybe ask us if we're gonna wear the T-shirt prior to posting on Facebook, that we'll be wearing the T-shirt. And then, also, I just want to note that when I got here, and I didn't even have the option to change my mind, because there was no T-shirt for me, everybody else had one except for me. So I think if in the future we're gonna do this, hopefully, it's managed a bit better. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I need to speak to that. I know there was a Facebook that went out, I think it was good intentions, and the staff member that put it out didn't quite get it. It wasn't a directive of the mayor, it wasn't a directive of council, it wasn't a directive of senior staff, and soon as it was pointed out, it was changed to an invitation and to wear, and that was an error, and no doubt errors are made. And also, I believe, staff had sent out a memo to council, and sorry if you didn't get it, those who want to purchase a T-shirt, were certainly welcome to purchase a T-shirt, and they're gonna be made available. Just to make sure that's clear. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I certainly appreciate the sentiment of this motion. We have a similar thing with how we perceive our flag raising and those things as a corporate decision and a corporate sort of support, but I do see that there is some, there is individuality here and individual difference. We don't have a policy that allows council to mandate what we wear, and in the absence of having a policy that mandates it, I'm not sure we need a policy that, or a motion that says that we shouldn't be mandated, because we're not. We can wear whatever we want at any time, and so I don't, I'm not sure this is necessary, even though I do understand the sentiment and support that, but I'm not sure it's necessary to have a motion that stops us from collectively wearing things, because we don't do it anyways.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question, see no further discussion. And the motion fails. Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Kunst, Mayor Frosch, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Anderson, Counsel Long, Counsel Davis opposed. Move on to I2, and this is Counsel Long. Counsel Long, just want to note, there was a memo put onto, yeah. Okay, Counsel Long, you've got it.
Okay, whereas the community has expressed concern for the safety of pedestrians using the intersection of two seventy-two and twenty-eighth Avenue in Aldagrove, and the intersection is frequented by children walking to and from Short Read Community Elementary School, and the safety of the children is of community concern, therefore be resolved that council directs staff to review and analyze the current, and I'm gonna change the word here, well, I'll leave it there, current traffic and pedestrian use of the intersection to determine if signalization is warranted, and I'm gonna make the motion, Your Worship, but I'd like to speak to it, please. I know there's a memo that's already been circulated, and I think maybe council can help me reword the solution that's needed.
I'll seek a seconder. Is there a seconder? Counsel Kunst, okay, Counsel Long.
Okay, so yes, there was a memo. Now, you must, I think council needs to admit that there was some confusion over this whole thing, because it started off on Facebook, again, with a letter that was written. I don't think it was officially received, it was written by a child, and there was another correspondence by the principal that got missed somehow, then it got referred to the school district, and they didn't understand what we were trying to do, and then there was a report written about the traffic signal, and we have it here, and it says it's a darn nice one. It's got the little lights that flash. Well, I went down there today and activated the thing. The first thing it says is, "The orange lights are flashing, but be very careful, because cars may not stop." Now, I'm wondering what kids would think when they push the button across the street, and you get some kind of message like that, first of all, coming, and then you're not expecting traffic to stop. I think that it's an absolute expectation. When a child pushes the button across the highway that's been installed by the township, traffic's gonna stop, and they're gonna cross safely. That is not the case at this intersection, and this intersection's an odd one, too, because it has a couple of streets, so maybe a car will stop, but another car might think it's turning left. So I understand the memo was given to us that it's a good intersection, but council has very often said, hey, can we do better? And I asked a couple of times what the cost would be to put and activate a signal in there, and I got responses of many hundreds of thousands of dollars. But again, having visited the site today, the poles are there, everything's hanging there, the button is there, it just doesn't have the red, orange, and green lights that normally stop traffic. So I would like this motion to direct staff to give us what the cost would be to convert it to a proper, full-blown signal that kids can push the button and trust that the red light's gonna go on, and they can get across the street safely. And this has been an issue for many years. I happen to know a young child that got hit on there many years ago on his bicycle. I think it was in the summer, actually, he wasn't even in school. Mind you, he wasn't paying attention, but possibly, it's because when you push that button, I couldn't believe what it was telling me. It says, "The lights are flashing, but cars might not stop. Good luck."
And that's a good warning, because cars might.
Well, I suppose, but for a grade one or two kid, that may not just be enough. So can we get a cost, at least, on what it would cost to convert it? Because I'm sure it's not gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars, because most of the infrastructure's still there.
So I've got one speaker to this, and I'm gonna ask.
So that would be my referral.
The motion doesn't say that, so. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, we're gonna just, we're gonna amend the motion. I don't need to speak to what it says right now. I'll just wait till it's amended.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Davis?
If we send it to council, find out how much it costs, and you're talking about the budget, is there kind of a timeline, I guess?
Okay, so right now, we have this motion, but it doesn't suggest that this come back with the costing, it suggests that we have a, an analyzation of the current traffic and pedestrian use, which I think we already have. So Counsel Long, I'll put you back on if you wish to make a referral, a motion.
Well, maybe my colleague here has a suggestion for an amendment that'll cover that, or, well, if it's in line with what I'm thinking. If it isn't, then I better not.
Well, Counsel Long, I think, if you want, you said that you want to get.
I would like to see the cost of converting it, yeah. And therefore be, and be further resolved that staff report back.
So then add amendment.
With the costing to convert it to a full controlled pedestrian signal.
Fair enough.
And I'm gonna leave the other one there, because you can say, well, we've already got the report.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, it's already there. So, could I have a seconder to the amendment? Counsel Anderson, I'm gonna open up, any discussion on the amendment? Seen none, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment. That carries unanimously. It's now on the motion as amended. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, just gonna, can I have it read back, please, just to clarify, because I think the first part's been left in. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So then the second paragraph, exactly how does it read?
The line that staff report back on the cost of converting the signal to a full crossing signal.
Okay, so I think, yeah, I think if we can, am I referring that to the 2020 budget process? I mean, so that's, so it'll become an unfunded discretionary item that we could just, we could just put it in, even though it's not warranted? That's gonna be an option for us in the 2020 process?
Backen.
I'll likelihood, Your Worship, it would have a report first, that would then need to be referred to the 2020 budget process, but we do the analysis first.
Okay, so I'm glad I clarified. So in regarding, because I think, I think in the response to the resident and their family, it was indicated, you know, that some of this work had already been done, that it wasn't warranted. If we're gonna get a report to come back and then refer it, we still have time to do that? I want to make sure that we still have time to do that. We still do? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. See no further discussion. I'll call the question on I2. And it carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Counsel Richter?
Item number 12 on the October 3rd items distributed list, which was an email from Cynthia Hamilton of the Willoughby Residents Association concerning additional advisory committees to council. Will a report from staff on this? I note that it's been referred to community planning, I believe, but will we be getting a follow-up on that?
Mr. Seffy's acknowledged, shaking his head, yes.
All right, and also on the items distributed today, item number 10 on page 72, a letter with regards to, from Mr. Ted Newhouse, with regards to.
Second.
Yeah, crime rates and drug needles, et cetera, getting that cleaned up. So will we get a report back on that one? Or do you want to just?
Refer it to the RCMP.
Refer it to the RCMP? Okay.
Okay. I think it'd be my direction, Mr. Backen. Do you need a motion? Just, we'll refer this to the RCMP. Anything else? Counsel Davis?
Yeah, I just wondered if, maybe a question, maybe to staff, on, I know we don't know what postal delivery, but I had a fellow call me, and he's having problems getting his mail delivered, because he claims that the postal cars can't cross a double yellow line, and we've put double yellow lines, he says, from about Eighth Avenue South on most, on two forty, two forty-eighth, and most of those roads from about Eighth, and the postal people won't, so he's having problems with his mail. Where did we find out about that?
Well, it's interesting. Number one, they can cross a double solid line to leave the highway if it's safe to do so. If that's their policy, I don't know what we can do about that. Mr. Backen, do you have any suggestions? I mean, it's.
You're correct, Your Worship. If it's to actually pull into a pull-out bay, like such as a mailbox, just to provide a service, that would be permissible. Likewise, if it was their policy, I'd presumably go to the nearest intersection and then turn around and do it, so.
Well, he said, about three years ago, they were dotted, then two years ago, they went solid, and then now they're a double solid line.
But double solid would prevent cars passing each other while in movement, but other than that, there's no municipal prohibitions per se, or traffic prohibitions, but it may be a policy of Canada Post. We haven't heard of this before.
He'd have to contact Canada Post, because under the Motive Act.
So I just, I just phone Canada Post.
As long as it's safe and he's pulling on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Yeah, so I had item 10, which we've referred to the RCMP. There was also item 1 in October the 3rd, and that was the relegation that came, and we're quite concerned about things in Smith. I don't think we did anything with them. Did we, should we not sort of send them a memo on setting them straight a little bit? Because they made quite a number of accusations about zoning and tall buildings and so forth. Anyway, it's item 1 on October the 3rd. I think they deserve a response, so I'd like to see the responses sent.
Okay, Mr. Backen?
You were gonna move the star, Your Worship, you promised to move the school.
Yes, they did, yeah, they did attend, and so, and the suggestion to them at the time was to ask for a meeting with staff, so I think I left it in their hands, but Mr. Seffy, have you heard anything?
I don't know if they were quite satisfied. Heard anything, Your Worship, in terms of?
Yeah, of a meeting with this group, because I did.
There was no request for a meeting from them to staff, Your Worship. They approached council directly.
Okay, so it was sort of left to them. If they wanted to meet it with staff, it'd certainly accommodate with senior staff to get the information, to address all the concerns, and we addressed some of them verbally, but if you feel.
I thought they should get a response.
Yeah, Mr. Backen?
I have the usual response letter, Your Worship, but that would include the ability for them to contact.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, thank you. Is there any other business? Nope.
Termination!
Counsel Davis moves termination. Counsel Woodward seconds it. All those in favor? Oh, I thought your hand went up. I saw your finger go up. You were lifting something.
It's fine.
All in favor, it was carried. Thank you.